All right. I'll, I'll call the Sparks City Council meeting in five eleven twenty twenty. Two order with a roll call, please.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Council members Abbott.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Byby.
Here.
Dare.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, um, I'll open it up, public comment. Is there anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Or Lisa, do you want to read that, that announcement right now?
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and, um, read the opening announcement and that will advise everybody how they can participate in public comment also. Um, so due to the social distancing requirements enacted in response to the COVID nineteen pandemic, the Sparks City Council meetings will be hosted in this virtual setting until further notice. The safety of Sparks residents, employees and elected officials are important to us and we appreciate your patience as we journey through this virtual meeting together. The city of Sparks uses Zoom, a third-party app for its virtual meetings and does not control its technical specifications or requirements. Your ability to participate in public comment during this meeting may be impacted by factors like the type of device you use, the strength of your internet or cellular signal, and the company that provides your internet or cellular service. The city of Sparks is not responsible if you are not able to participate in a meeting through Zoom due to any of these factors. For those of you watching and listening from home, general public comment will be announced for items four and twelve point one. If you wish to speak during general public comment, you will need to call in using the phone number or meeting link provided on the city council agenda. Public comment will not be permitted on social media outlets. But comment will also be announced for public hearing items ten point one, ten point two, and ten point three. You will be muted upon entry into the waiting room. Our clerk's office staff will admit you to the meeting. If you would like to speak during public comment items, press star nine when prompted. You will be called on to speak one at a time by name or by the telephone number you are calling from. Please be listening for the clerk to read off your name or telephone number. No video callers will be admitted to the meeting. When you are called on to speak for public comment, state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name and you will have three minutes. Any person who disrupts the meeting to the extent that is disorderly conduct will be removed from the meeting. Thank you again for joining us and we will now take public comment.
Okay, we'll open up the public comment period. Um, Lisa, is there anybody in the queue?
As of right now, sir, I do not show anybody.
Yeah, wait a second here. Okay, seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the council. Uh, five point one approval of the agenda. Looking for a motion?
Move to approve. I'll second it, Abbott.
Okay, and I believe that we need to pull, we will open up the public comment on ten point one and then continue that item. Is that correct? Is that correct?
We'll open up for, for the public hearing item?
On ten point one, we'll listen and see if there's any public hearing. And then we'll bring it back to the council and then continue that.
If I'm. City manager?
Where, where did that, where did that come from?
That came from the meeting this morning with, um, community services. Did my rea- is that right, Paul?
I, I don't, I don't think so. Maybe they were talking to you about, uh, ten point three, the five-year consolidated plan for CDBG.
Paul, did you hear what I heard or what?
Yeah, it was actually on planning commission that they were talking about.
Okay, so yeah, we, we want you to hear the whole agenda.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second for the discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Six point one, consideration possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks City Council meeting for April twenty seventh, twenty twenty. Looking for a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Mr. Anderson, Anderson and a second from Ms. Byby. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, number seven, we do not have any announcements or presentations. Consent items eight point one, eight point two. Anybody want to pull one or else looking for a motion?
I'll move to approve at eight point one through eight point two.
Okay. We have a motion.
I'll second the motion, Anderson.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Abbott and a second from Mr. Anderson. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay, nine point one, general business. Presentation discussion of possible approval of a complement change in the Financial Services Department effective May eleventh, twenty twenty. That's, you're gonna do this, Neil? Or Jill?
Jill Valdez is gonna present that for us.
Okay, welcome Jill.
Good afternoon, mayor and city council members. Jill Valdez, human resources analyst senior for the record. Before you today is a recommendation to change the complement of approved positions to remove the position of payroll administrator and to add one accountant one-two position. This would allow the finance department to reclassify the payroll administrator to an accountant one. The finance department started working with human resources over the past year to discuss this change and to place it in the fiscal twenty-one budget. However, the current pandemic event has demonstrated the urgency of this change before July. Let me explain. The payroll function is currently performed by a standalone position of payroll administrator. While there are some advantages to having a subject matter expert in payroll, the major downfall is the lack of a systemic plan for cross-training. Other subjects are performed. Uh, in an accounting job family, allowing for cross-training and movement from one accounting function to another in finance. Furthermore, as the payroll has grown in complexity, the role of the payroll administrator has changed as well. For example, the payroll administrator works not only on the transactional aspect of paying staff, but also in the broader functional areas of finance, including compliance, auditing, accounting, and budgeting. Because payroll is a piece of the whole. This has made the department and human resources reevaluate the education, experience, knowledge, skills, and abilities needed for the expanded role. And it has also led to an evaluation of the essential functions of the job. Taken together, it is clear that the current need of the department is to make the transition from payroll administrator to accountant. Although this conversation has taken place over the past year, the pandemic event shined a spotlight on the core nature of this payroll function and the fragility of working without adequate structure for cross-training. For that reason, staff takes the exceptional position that this change should occur immediately. The estimated cost of the change is five hundred dollars in the remaining few months of fiscal twenty and seven thousand dollars for fiscal twenty-one, both to the general fund. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions or comments? Paul?
I did not have a question. Okay.
Charlene?
Um, yeah, Jill, I just had one question. Uh, do you, is the person that holds the payroll administrator spot right now, do they have the, um, the skills to do the accountant one? Do you have to add, uh, further training or expertise? Or is it something that the payroll administrator already can, can go right on board and there's no, uh, difference? Or is it a change in the actual person that's going to become account, the new accountant one position?
This would be a reclassification of the existing payroll administrator, so it's not adding a body. It's taking the payroll administrator who does have the education and the experience needed to become a accountant one. And, uh, just simply reclassifying that job.
Okay, I just, that, you answered my question. I was wondering about, did they have the, the certification and the skills necessary to move into accountant one? That's all, all I needed to know. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Uh, Mr. Dare?
Yeah, my question kind of goes to, and it's gonna go, it's kind of encompasses some of the other portions coming as well, but with us knowing of what we're going to be facing financially, I know we're talking these potential raises and things of that fashion. Do we just move forward because we should and then revisit what we have to in the future? It just, I could have, I know my brain wonders about any idea of giving raises or things with this going on and just want to help answer that question for our citizens. What's that approach? If you could help me understand that, Neil?
I, I'd be happy to. Um, you know, this, this goes, the, these actions we're asking you to take today, not only under nine point one, but ten point one and ten point two as well. Um, you know, are related to the, the fundamental idea behind our classification and compensation program. And that is to pay the people appropriately for the level of responsibility and, and knowledge and breadth that they carry in their job. And, and I believe that as an organization, we should continue to strive to do that even in hard times. Uh, you know, we're, we're talking about relatively few dollars here in all three of these items. Um, not that, you know, any one of these is going to tip the scale, but, but I think it, the, the more important move here is to do what we can to keep every position we have in the city whole. So that, uh, so that we as an organization don't have some people being appropriately paid and some people being perhaps underpaid or even overpaid. One of the positions you're gonna see, and I can't remember if it's in ten one or ten two, but one of the positions you're going to see today is actually being downgraded because we realize it's being overpaid. So it's the, it's that same thought. We want to right-size our compensation package for the level of responsibility that we are expecting from all of our employees. So we would ask you to go ahead and consider that as you, as you deliberate today.
Thank you, and I, I, I do agree with you. I just think it's one of those definite questions people have. I know it came to my mind and I, I do agree though. I think we need to, and then as, as we have potential, whatever we have to face, we do it together as a conglomerate and not individually. I, I do agree, but I thank you for your explanation.
And if it's okay with you, Mayor Smith, I'd like to give Jill an opportunity to weigh in, uh, just in case I miss something. Currently as an HR professional, and I am not.
Absolutely, Jill.
Well, this particular request, um, we, I, as I noted, is an exceptional request in that the payroll function is critical in these times. Uh, so many of the services that are needed by our citizens are performed, um, day in and day out by our first responders, um, our individuals at the treatment plant, um, throughout the city really. And in order for us to keep, uh, providing these services, we have to pay the individuals performing those services. And so we've discovered that if, uh, for example, our payroll administrator were to become ill, uh, that we, it is essential, we can't go without the payroll function. And therefore it's become a critical need for us to, uh, structurally make sure that there is cross-training so that there is continuity of that service. So that's why we bring forward this particular, uh, request to you at this time.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, looking for a motion? Somebody jump in there.
I'm getting to it, sir. I'm.
Yeah, Mr. Dare?
I'm happy to make that. Um, I move to approve the comp, the complement changes of removing one payroll administrator position and adding one accountant one that slash two position to the Financial Services Department effective May eleventh, twenty twenty.
We have a motion looking for a second.
I'll second that, Byby.
Okay, we have a motion and a second and further discussion. Seeing none, please vote. I'm sorry, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Okay. Ten point one, this is a public hearing. Public hearing, consideration possible approval of a memorandum of understanding AC five six six three between the city of Sparks and the operating engineers local number three. Go ahead, Jill.
Good afternoon, mayor and city council members. Uh, Jill Valdez, HR analyst senior again for the record. Before you today are two memorandums of understanding with the operating engineers local number three. One is for the non-supervisory group and the other is for the supervisory group. The city of Sparks and the operating engineers local number three agreed to use the Corn Fairy Hay Group, uh, otherwise referred to as hay, method of classifying jobs effective October first of two thousand eighteen. This involved a very thorough process of reviewing approximately a hundred and eighty jobs at the city. And in doing so, uh, it was, uh, really an extraordinary effort by all of our employees to provide input about their job for the supervisors, for the managers to review that input and for us to complete a major project. That, uh, effective date, October first, two thousand eighteen, um, contemplated that it was not a one-time, uh, uh, project, but that in order to maintain that work over time, that um, the parties agreed a subset of hay jobs would be reviewed annually so that we could maintain the integrity of a classification system. The goal, uh, at the outset was to review a minimum of ten percent of jobs annually so that all jobs are re-reviewed at least once in a ten-year period. As Sparks Job Evaluation Panel was formed, comprised of city employees from across different locations and marketing units. They were trained in July of twenty nineteen to do the work. And the panel has three options. They can recommend no change. They can recommend a level increase or they can recommend a level decrease. I'd like to summarize the panel's work to date, uh, for you. Uh, the panel did look at one job that was brand new, so there was no level. And then they also looked at twenty-two existing jobs in both the supervisory and non-supervisory uh, bargaining units for the operating engineers. The panel recommended no change to the vast majority of the jobs, so about seventy-three point seven percent um, had no change, and this is a signal of, uh, good classification system where we would expect the majority of the classifications not to require change. A classification level increase was recommended on five jobs uh, since the training occurred, or twenty-three point seven percent. And a classification level decrease was recommended for one job representing about four point six percent of those reviewed. Uh, the employees in the affected positions are notified of the panel's results and given the opportunity to appeal. Uh, there has been one appeal. It goes to the hay group. And, uh, they do a second independent review. The second review was, uh, did uphold the panel's recommendation. The employees or departments can request the job level review. And the Sparks Job Evaluation Panel has completed their evaluation of all but one of the job series requested by employees and/or departments. Before you today are three classification level changes recommended in the non-supervisor group and one in the supervisory bargaining unit. One of the four before you is a decrease. The other three are single level increases. The subject matter experts from the hay group provided the training and they've also consulted with us along the way to help validate that the methodology is being used correctly. So the first item on the agenda that you're looking at, uh, is the operating engineers local number three, non-supervisory memorandum of understanding. Staff recommends that you approve all changes for three positions. Building inspector one, which did go down. Equipment mechanic lead, which went up one step and wastewater operator three, which went up one step. The financial impact is zero dollars in fiscal twenty and, uh, negative five thousand dollars in fiscal twenty-one to the Development Services Fund. Five hundred in fiscal twenty and five thousand in fiscal twenty-one to the Motor Vehicle Fund. And one thousand in fiscal twenty and ten thousand in fiscal twenty-one to the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility Fund. And just to continue with the question before, I do this. Um, it was an incredible investment on the part of the city to put this system into place. And the maintenance of it, um, is necessary for it to remain viable over time. And for that reason, it's recommended that we do put these changes into place. Currently, because of the pandemic, the Job Evaluation Panel has not been able to uh, convene for the last few months. It's difficult with the social distancing requirements. So these are, uh, changes that occurred through January, uh, as recommended by the panel. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, before I go to public comment, any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Ms. Byby?
Um, so Jill, how often will this panel, uh, will it be annual, twice a year, they'll go in and review the different hay positions? A percentage of them to see if they're on, on, on task or anything needs to be, um, increased or decreased in those levels? How often will this be occurring?
In the first year, our plan was to have, uh, meeting approximately once a month or once every month just so that the panel could become very familiar with the process. So we had fewer jobs per month, but, um, a steady, uh, regular opportunity to look at jobs. Uh, with time, uh, we, it may not be necessary to meet quite as often. We've considered a quarterly meeting, uh, whatever is necessary to, um, maintain that ten percent of jobs, uh, per year or to address any new positions as needed for the budget.
Okay, I, I guess if you're saying monthly, could that mean that they could come? If they were meeting monthly now, could they come to us monthly with adjustment? Uh, adjustments like you're asking us today? And do we have the funding to do that? Uh, if we had a lot of jobs that needed to be, um, increased to level? My, my concern is obviously fiscally, can we? You know, is it, is that, is that what would happen? Would they come monthly with a, a request? For changes?
Uh, this has been happening since July of twenty nineteen. The meeting, uh, the committee has been meeting, uh, monthly or every other month. We have tried to consolidate the, um, the, you know, to fewer meetings, so we're not necessarily coming to council every time. It does require some negotiation and discussion with the union first, and we would expect based on what the consultants have told us, that the majority of jobs are likely not going to require a change. So for example, out of the operating engineers, uh, you know, almost seventy-four percent of jobs didn't require any change at all. Currently, because of the pandemic, the committee has not met since January.
Oh.
And, uh, so, okay, so that is, uh.
Do you want to step in for me?
Yeah.
Okay, he's muted.
Okay.
Go ahead, Jill.
So the, the panel, uh, will, will work with, uh, city manager's office in regards to when the panel will reconvene again, uh, for this work, but at this time, because of the pandemic, we have not had a meeting since January.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll open up the public comment period. Anybody wishing to speak at this time? Lisa?
So if you have a public comment for this public hearing item, please press star nine on your telephone or indicate that you would like to raise your hand on your computer. And I will give you just one minute. And it looks like we have none, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we're seeing none. I'll bring you back to the council for action. Looking for a motion?
I'll go ahead and make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Um, I move to approve the memorandum of understanding AC five six six three between the city of Sparks and the operating engineers local number three, non-supervisory unit effective May eleventh, twenty twenty.
Okay, we have a motion looking for a second?
I can second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, here's another public hearing item, ten point two. Consideration of possible approval of a memorandum of understanding AC five six six four between the city of Sparks and operating engineers local number three, supervisory unit. Jill?
Jill Valdez with human resources again for the record. This second of the two MOUs is with the operating engineers local number three supervisory unit. Staff recommends that you approve the level change for the position of environmental control supervisor, which went up by one level. The financial impact is five hundred dollars in fiscal twenty and five thousand dollars in fiscal twenty-one to the drains operation fund. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions? Comments? Okay, this is a public hearing item, so open up the public. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time?
And if you wish to speak for a public hearing item ten point two, please press star nine on your telephone or indicate your desire to speak by raising your hand. And I'm showing none, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, seeing, seeing the public comment, I'll bring it back to the council. Looking for a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll take a motion.
Okay, I, was that, uh, Ed or Donald?
Ed.
Donald made the motion? Okay, looking for a second?
I think Ed made the motion. I'll take the second.
Okay. Uh, motion by Mr. Lawson, second by Mr. Abbott. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, ten point three, another public hearing item. Public hearing, consideration possible approval of the five-year consolidated plan for fiscal years twenty twenty through twenty-four and annual action plan for fiscal year twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. And, um, Jim?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, city council. Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Jim Rundle, planning manager, for the record. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I think I'll speak to the comment you brought up earlier at the beginning of the council meeting. Staff is asking that, uh, you consider this, uh, quick presentation and, uh, then ultimately uh, continue the item and I'll get into that if that's okay, Mr. Mayor.
Is, oh, that's the one they were talking about?
Yeah, that should have been the one that you got briefed on today.
Okay.
And, uh, um, council brief.
Okay.
Mayor brief.
So you want, Jim, so you want me to open up the public hearing at, at the proper time and then bring it back and then continue this item?
Uh, staff will be asking that, yes, that you, uh, it is a public hearing and so that you host the public hearing and, um, then our recommendation to the council will be a continuance.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, the city of Sparks is an entitlement community under the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, otherwise known as HUD. And the Community Development Block, uh, Block Grant Program, which is called CDVG. As an entitlement community, the city receives funding each year as long as it's identified in the five-year plan, the consolidated plan which you have today. This year Sparks is completing its fifth year of a five-year plan. One of the items in front of you today is a new five-year consolidated plan. This lays out the planet, planning of spending CDVG money on items such as the Community Assistance Center, which is the homeless shelter, affair housing activities, pedestrian improvements, including street curb and gutter replacement. And, uh, and those are restricted to the areas in, uh, low to moderate census tracts. In addition to the CDVG programs, the city of Sparks partners with the city of Reno and La Celle County in the Home Consortium. Through the Home Consortium, Sparks receives an annual allocation of home funding to assist in the development of affordable housing projects in the region. A couple that may be familiar are the ones, uh, right across the street from Sea Hall, the Sea Hall Apartments. And the more recent one over on the corner of Fourth Street and, um, Lincoln, which was recently constructed. Well, to receive this funding, we have to prepare an annual action plan as part of the federal application process for CDVG funding. The plan in front of you today identifies the process through which the jurisdictions allocate and distribute that money. HUD has recently advised the city of Sparks that for next year, the CDVG allocation would be six hundred and HUD has recently advised the City of Sparks that for next year, the CDVG allocation would be $684,000. Additionally, in accordance with the CDVG allocation process, HUD requires a consultation and public comment process and notification of public meetings in the newspaper. Today, city, the staff is asking the council to continue this item to June 22nd. Why are we asking for the continuance? Well, because of the recent COVID-19 emergency, the city received supplemental funding through the CARES Act, which is the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act. The five-year, uh, the five-year plan and the annual action plan in front of you today were finalized prior to this occurring. And these plans need to address how that allocation through the CARES Act will be spent. HUD understood that it will take additional time for staff to prepare that. And therefore they've changed the deadline for the submission of the consolidated plan and the annual action plan to August 15th. Staff is already in the process of amending these plans and is requesting that the council, uh, continue today's items to June 22nd. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, any questions or comments?
I have one.
Who is it, Ms. Bybee?
Um, hey, Jim, can you, um, remind me again what our additional CARES Act funding was for CDGB?
Are you asking for the amount?
Uh huh.
Uh, I believe it was, um, uh, 400,000. Uh, but I could have Armando, uh, confirm that exact amount. He's more familiar with that if, if that's okay, Councilwoman Bybee.
Um, yeah, that'd be fine. So we have in our, our original 684,000. And in addition to that, the CARES Act funding approximately an additional 400,000 to the 684.
Uh, the 684, correct. Yeah, that was, is for next year. And then we got allocated minority for this year. So we actually will amend, uh, last year's plan as well.
Armando, are you there?
Uh, yes, Mayor Smith, this is Armando, our National Assistant Community Services Director. Yes, that is the correct amount. It is 402,633 dollars in supplemental dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Dare?
Yes, uh, my question goes to, I, I've heard a little bit, and I was just on a federal call earlier, confirmed it, that we are allowed to use some of that, uh, CARES money and potentially help some of our local businesses if we so choose, as long as we've got a plan together and follow the guidelines. So I'd, I'd, I'd ask that staff would at least bring back some possible information if we can make that kind of decision. I know that we have a lot of expenditures that we are spending helping regionally and I don't, I want to be very wise and careful with that. But I also believe standing with our businesses is crucial. And again, there, there's different ways we could potentially do it. So I don't even want to give too many details on it now. I think it'd be best if I, maybe the staff could come back with some answers on that.
That is absolutely our, our plan is to come back to you, talk to you about the guidance we, we get from, from HUD and what the possible uses are and, uh, and then have you dictate, set policy for us on, on how that money should be used.
Um, I did want to tell you, I, I was on a federal call earlier and, uh, they're going to send over a, um, there was a whole presentation made on this particular subject that they're going to send me and I'll get it to you. But this, this will be helpful in making that. But it is something that is starting to happen. We're not the only city or state or whenever who has considered using it for that. So, thank you.
Okay, other, any other questions or comments?
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, just wanted to say, I, I also, uh, suggest that we go along with staff on this one because it's looking like there are more areas that it could be used than most of us realize. So I think it'd be good for us to take a little bit of time to, to review it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, this is a public hearing item. I'll open it up for the public. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Lisa?
If anybody is wishing to speak for a public hearing item 10.3, press star nine on your telephone now or indicate, um, your request to speak by raising your hand on your computer.
Okay, seeing none, I'll back to the council. And, um, looking for a motion to continue this item to, what, what date did you say, Jim, June?
We're requesting June 22nd, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, looking for, that motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Paul?
I move to continue this agenda item to the June 22nd, 2020 city council meeting.
Okay, we have a motion, looking for a second.
I'll second, Bybee.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, move to number 12, comments, comments from the public. I'll open up the public comment period. Anybody wishing to speak at this time?
And I will remind everybody, press star nine on your telephone or raise your hand on your computer to indicate your request to speak. And I'm showing none.
Okay, seeing none, bring back to the council, comments from the mayor, city council and city manager. Comments from anybody?
I have one.
Ms. Bybee?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I just wanted to comment on, uh, some, some thank yous for some of our, our staff has been working really hard. And in particular, there's a few that have, uh, really had a heavy workload and done a lot of good work for the city for us. Uh, Doug Thornley representing us to try to get us to this phase one, working with our regional partners. Uh, appreciate his time and effort. Uh, Julie Dool with her work on the Joint Information Center and the video she shot with all of us on Saturday. And, and with regards to that video, I think the most important message we really need to send to our businesses, to our community, is how important it is to be, as we want to move to the next phase, we've got to do this right and we can't mess it up. We really have to abide by what they're telling us, the rules, the restrictions on every business, um, on all of us as customers as we go in. And I'm hoping that everybody realizes that and if, uh, as well as, as protecting the vulnerable. Now, I've got a 90-year-old father and his 88-year-old neighbor that we haven't let leave. Uh, and we will continue to do so. So protecting the vulnerable, that those of us who can go out and, and help our businesses by, um, by shopping, by, you know, going to restaurants, but doing so under the guidelines. And, uh, hopefully our number, members will keep improving and we can keep, you know, this measured manner of moving forward, uh, which we all want. So excited to be in phase one and, uh, thank you to everyone, the whole staff, for all your work in helping us get there.
Thank you for those comments. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, would just like to ask the public to please be patient, um, with, with the city staff. Um, right now we're, we're getting complaints, I think quite a few of us have heard them about the parks not being as nice as they should be, um, greenways along the roadway, um, not being de-weeded and, and such. And, um, the, the pandemic has affected the city as a whole. Um, but we actually did have COVID cases that, uh, that popped up in, in public works and, um, the people they worked with had to go on the 14-day quarantine. So we're already behind the ball. And not to mention, unfortunately, we did need to let go of some, some temporary staff. And it's just, it's an unfortunate time and we just ask, please be patient. Um, we've got an incredible team with the City of Sparks doing great things and please be patient with them.
Thank you, Paul. Good comments. Anybody else? Okay, objection, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
How do you think? Fantastic week.